Meeting at 6:00 PM. Meeting is in session. First like to take roll call. Requirement is, please note that you're here. Rebecca?
I said.
Bill?
Here.
Katie?
Yep.
Anna?
Here.
Brenda?
Present.
Bob, present. Before we start the meeting, I would just like to remind everyone but of the distractions that we're sometimes faced with on these Zoom meetings. And I would request that people in attendance, please turn off your cell phone devices so that we don't get disturbed during our, our meeting. Board members, the same thing is true here. We would ask that you focus for the next hour and a half or whatever on the board meeting and please turn off your cell phones. If we could all stand and recite the pledge of allegiance if so inclined. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, we have a couple of changes to the agenda. Item three, under new biz, consideration to approve the MOU. We haven't gotten everything worked out there as a district yet with the county. So I would ask you to please strike that. We will deal with it at a future meeting and probably the next meeting we have. The other one is the addition of a bus purchase. And I would like to put that somewhere between 10 and 11. So can we make that 10A? 11 seems to be something that we might spend some time on. So I would just like to care, take care of those, that bus need. And I think we've had several meetings, so we'll be able to discuss it with members, representatives of those meetings. So with those two items, I would look for a motion to, to accept the agenda as shown.
Did you say that first item was number two or number three?
Number three.
Number three. Thank you.
So look for a motion to approve the agenda with the changes that we've discussed.
I'll make the motion. This is Anna.
Thank you, Anna. Second?
I'll second. It's Rebecca.
Thank you. We have a motion, the second on the floor. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of the agenda. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. No scheduled presenters. Public input. This is the segment of our board meeting where people that have any concerns or any things that they would like to share on the behalf or to the district, now is your time to speak. You're allowed up to three minutes. Please refrain from comments about personal things as employees, for instance. So does anyone in the public wish to speak to the board about a board, about a school issue? Moving on down the line, finance report. You have today, Josh.
Unmute myself first. So you've got the cash flow worksheet. We spent a lot of time in the last couple of meetings going through financing numbers. So this is pretty short and sweet version. I was going to carry on, but you see on top the balances in our checking accounts as of the date we sent out the agenda, just over 2.7 million. And the one major thing to, to note, there's the very first line in the cash flow outstanding checks, the $2.1 million. Our debt service payments were sent in the mail last week. That accounts for just about 1.7 million of that. So you see our cash will significantly go decrease for a while and as we build that back up. A low point there in the end of January really is a timing for to flop the ideas revenue that we receive on January 30th with the payroll that goes out those days. You'll see that we still stayed positive with our cash. Basically, in this time of the year, after we've made the debt service payments, until we get towards the end of the fiscal year, nothing is too, you know, huge or major that goes through here. A normal payroll going out. Ideas payments coming in. The big things then, as we've talked about, as we revise the budget and talked about those things are revenue coming in for food service and community. As we go through the pandemic and a loss revenue there, but as we see through the cash flow, not only in this worksheet, but throughout the entire fiscal year for the district will remain positive and there'll be no need for us to do any anticipation borrowing. So it's kind of the short, quick version of it. If there's anything that you have questioned on in specific, I can sure help out to fill in anything that you'd have.
Members, anything for Josh? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as shown.
I'll make a motion.
Katie? Katie on the second. Bill on the second. Other discussion. A yes vote would be for the approval of the finance report. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In event a board member wants to discuss any single item, it can be and will be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. I usually hand this over to Jeff. He likes the acknowledgement of the resolution of gifts, which we all do.
Yes, we will get to that in just a second, but there are a few names that we need to add into these positions here for a medical leave. And the first one is Tim Hodges. And the second line right here will be Lori Hanson. And the third one is Pam Longevan. Just so that you're aware of that during this. And then getting to the resolutions for the acceptance of donations. In the amount of $100, Mark Conway from Lawrence Meats is giving us money for as needed items, as is the Cannon Valley Senior Center for $200 for as needed items. The Blandin Foundation donated 11,458, 89 as a part of a matching grant opportunity in partnership with the Cannon Falls Education Foundation in the Cannon Falls schools over the next two items there. To continue the hotspot device purchasing and monthly charges for those hotspots. All three of those items are one package and work together to fulfill in our technology needs for distance learners. The state of Minnesota for $3,000 for the Cannon Kids COVID relief. $200 from Lucas Olson's Great Things for Kids account for 16 Lego kits for Laura Albers' room. $195.65 from Charlie Catterlick for snow sleds. $60 from the Stark family for snow sleds. And then $1,615.84 from the Cannon Falls Head Foundation for the Lego Maker, Lego Maker Space for the elementary. Thank you all for your donations for this month. We're greatly appreciated.
Thank you. We'll take just half a minute here. If you want to look over the minutes from their two previous meetings. If you have any questions or concerns, now would be the time to raise them up. When you're finished looking them over, I would look for an approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Brenda on the motion?
I'll second. This is Anna.
Anna on the second. Other discussion. A yes vote would be for the approval of the consent agenda as shown. Rebecca?
Yes. Sorry, my space bar is not unmuting me like it should. Sorry.
We're okay. Bill?
Yes.
Katie? Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a six zero vote. We have no old business. Under new business, consideration to approve the updated list for the 2021 coaches. Reed, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I'll just speak briefly. Hello, everybody. We did have last time that they were approved here at the beginning of the winter season or before the winter season. Things got pushed back and we did have a few coaches that were not able to continue with us or even get started due to their work schedules or the season being started late, et cetera. So that's part of that. And the other part of the approval is we had incident, one of our program here or not incident, some cases, and we had to bring in some others just to help offer some support at the volunteer level. So that's, should be clearly stated there.
It would look like all your positions are filled now?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Reed? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the updated list of the 2021 winter coaches.
I'll make a motion to approve the list. Katie?
Second?
No second, Bob.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion. A yes vote would be for approval of the winter coaches as shown. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna? Anna, do you say yes?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a six zero vote.
Hey, hey, Bob, I forgot to chime in, but I think you skipped over my report. There had a couple of things I just wanted to mention.
Yes, I did skip over that.
You wouldn't mind going back just for a few minutes?
We can insert it right now.
Okay. I'll start from the bottom up here. This week is paraprofessional recognition week for the week of January 25th through the 29th. And the governor has proclaimed this week, paraprofessional recognition week. There are over 20,000 paraprofessionals in Minnesota working hard every day to make sure that every child has the education they need to succeed in school and in life. Please take a minute to thank all of our pairs for their hard work by recognizing their efforts and their contributions to our district. The next item is staff COVID testing. We had a staff COVID testing here on January 20th, which we had about 60 participants in district wide. So for the most part, for the first time, it was very successful, I think. And we have one coming up next Wednesday as well as we rotate those every two week, two weeks for an opportunity for staff to get in testing and on a continued basis. Obviously, still down in the pandemic. Some vaccination updates. As far as staff is concerned, we were notified last week by the state on a Sunday night that we would have a phone call on a Monday morning and they surprised us by saying that they had extra vaccinations and they were willing to start a a pilot program for the state to start vaccinating teachers, which is great to hear. I actually shouldn't say just teachers. It's all school staff. And so we were asked to prioritize those people in our school at the highest risk categories and then send those to the state for them to sign up and to get their vaccination. As I mentioned before, last week, we had four of those numbers. And then this week, the number was up to 12 for the district. So hopefully that continues to, one, be a part of the state priority to, to keep vaccinating school staff and to also make sure that those numbers go from four to 12 to whatever the number is going to be to keep increasing that amount, which is good news. So it's a slow rollout, but it's at least it's a start. And then as far as the community vaccination program, I had mentioned before that we were working with the county on a site to be used for the community vaccination. We thought we had it all set and then late on Friday evening, I got notified that they want to put a pause on that as of right now and do some more research with us to make sure that we have the adequate spacing that they need for that program. And so that's the reason why we had to pull that off of the agenda tonight. So hopefully we will have things squared away and we'll bring that back again on February 8. And then finally, I did contact Sue Peterson from School Perceptions per the board's request. And actually I didn't, Lori sent the email, but it was in concert with me about requesting comments from the community survey. And in her email back, she says, good to hear from you. I'm glad the board is continuing to thoughtfully use the survey data and considering the importance of comments. The comment report we provided to the district is a review of all comments and a finding of themes, things that said repeatedly by multiple people. When you consider comments and decision making, it is imperative that they only be used as a secondary decision making source as they can't be quantified. That is the reason we, we create the report that we do. I don't dispute that every comment is important, but it is easy for a reader to read a comment and latch on to the statement because it may be a message they have heard before. So we are always cautious at boards considering all comments. The second piece is to be thoughtful of the fact that there is possibility, some comments may be redactable. Should a report be created and a public record request occur for them? That said, I would encourage the board to have a discussion on the need or value of such a report and what questions would having this information answer and how would it be used? In regards to January 25th, the board had asked if she could be here. She said that she would be flying that evening so that she is unavailable. So that is the information I have back from Sue.
You know, I, if anybody has any more discussion to this, let's hold it until we get down to that agenda item and we can deal with it all at the same time.
But Jeff, I had a question on the, on the vaccinations for the staff. So, you know, seeing that we have leaves of absence on the list, would they still also be included in the priority?
Yep, they would be considered for that priority list, yes.
So, so any, any staff member that's on leave of absence would be eligible?
Yep.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Okay, moving on down to the consideration to approve the 19 to 21 teachers master agreement, MOU, Schedule C changes. Would like to deal with this? Reed? Jeff?
I can start with it and Reed can chime in if I can find it here. There were some items on the Schedule C that don't quite match up with what we are currently doing. And so we felt it necessary to make some, some of those small changes to Schedule C so that they match what we are currently doing and what we, what currently our needs are. The cost is cost neutral, meaning that there's no cost either way, extra to either side of this. But it does fit in nicely with what we are doing. And one of the examples that we have on there are the co-directors for speech. They're not listed as co-directors in Schedule C, but they only used as a head and assistants for this type and as they're currently listed. So we want to list them as co-directors and they would split that. And then the rest of this is dealing with their, our current track coach situation. And the rest of the, this item here is how we would end up paying for those assistant coaches afterward. Is that kind of it in a nutshell, Reed?
Yeah, I think so. We're just trying to, to clean this up and match what our plan is for our programming in those areas. For example, you know, just touching back here on the speeches, it's listed as head and several assistants. And it sounds like for several years now, it hasn't been followed that way. So we're just trying to make it follow what we've been doing in the past and what we're continuing to do currently. Track as well, we're looking to go to a one head coach system and then prioritize. I think we had talked about here previously in one of my reports that I had been working on Schedule C and looking at some of those, maybe some of those inequities as far as payment is considered. And this was one of them. And just go ahead and taking that pool of money and creating some of those, the one head track coach and then creating that extra assistant coach for that. So that's just, it's just cleaning up what our plan is and making it match on Schedule C is the intent.
Has there been discussion with the coaches slash advisors on moving forward with this? Or is this just something we do to clean it up?
Uh, no, I've had a couple Zooms with several of the coaches that are on that Schedule C committee. And then that's where it started with preparing them to create an MOU with the district office and administration.
We've been working with the, the leadership and the, and the union to make these changes also. And they signed off on it today if we are agreeable. Or maybe it wasn't today, but sometime previous.
That's what an MOU means, doesn't it?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions for either Reed or Jeff? If not, I would, I would look for a motion to approve the MOU with Schedule C changes.
I move to approve.
By Bill? Second?
I'll second. Katie?
Katie on the second. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of the MOU with the Schedule C changes. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Moving past number three down to number four, consideration to approve a retirement request at the end of the 2021 school year.
This is for Deanne Coleman and we'd like to thank her for her 33 years devoted to the district for the, their students and their staff and all of the collaboration that has taken place over those years.
It's an incredible length of time for, for her. We do give her our gratitude for years of service for sure. Look for a motion to approve this retirement request.
So move, Bob.
Motion by Bill?
I'll second. This is Anna.
Anna on the second. Other discussion. A yes vote would be the approval of the retirement request for Deanne Coleman. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a six zero vote. Some are difficult to see go, especially the ones that have given their adult lives to our school district. That's a hard one. Consideration to approve a retirement request at the end of the 2021 school year.
This one is for Sue Samuelson and she has been 29 years also in the teaching capacity and affected many students, obviously, and staff and collaborations over the years.
Another tough one to lose for sure. Look for a motion to approve the retirement request for Sue Samuelson.
I'll make a motion. I second.
Okay, stop. Who was, who won that?
I'll take the motion. Brenda, second.
I'll take the second.
Thank you. Katie on the motion. Brenda on the second. Other discussion. A yes vote would be to approve Sue Samuelson's retirement at the end of this upcoming school year or our present school year. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes six zero. Consideration to approve a leave request, January 25th to February 26th.
This is for Missy Clapperk and I would recommend that we approve it.
I'll make the motion.
Brenda? Second?
I'll second. It's Rebecca.
Both in the second. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve the leave request for these dates for Missy. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Hey, that passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to approve a long-term teacher substitute contract from January 25th to February 26th.
This is for Nick McGrath. I recommend approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor for the approval of Nick McGrath?
I'll make the motion. This is Anna.
Anna on the motion. Second?
I'll second. It's Rebecca.
Rebecca on the second. Thank you. Other discussion. A yes vote would be to approve the long-term substitute contract, Nick McGrath, for January 25th to February 26th of 21. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to approve a leave request in accordance with teacher's master contract, master agreement, Title 10, March 9th to June, to June 4th of 21.
And this is for Destiny Stamer. I recommend approval.
Okay. Hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Rebecca on the motion.
I'll second. This is Anna.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion. A yes vote would be to approve the leave request in accordance with the teacher master agreement. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to approve a long-term sub-teacher contract March 9th to June 4th of 2021.
This is for Barb Templin. I recommend approval.
Brenda on the motion?
I'll second.
Bill on the second. Any other discussion? A yes vote is to approve the long-term sub-teacher contract from March 9th to June 4th. Good to see Barb coming back. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes six zero. Consideration to approve the updated policy 808 COVID-19 face coverings.
With the change in, in executive order right around the turn of the year, MSBA updated their policy 808 on face coverings for the COVID pandemic. I recommend the approval of the updates coming from MSBA.
Look for a motion to approve.
I'll second. Katie?
Bill and Katie on the second. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of the updated policy 808 COVID-19 face covering. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by six zero. Okay, we're down to our, our new agenda item. The possible purchase of a passenger bus. We'll just jump right into it. You, you had a, a transportation meeting, number one, where you had this discussion. And we feel like we have And we feel like we have some needs there. Jeff?
Yeah, a little over a week ago. Our uh, construction bus, as we call it, that the district has had for many, many years. Uh, was red flagged by DOT and put out of service uh, for good. And that it could not be repaired. And so this was uh, an item that took us by surprise. And so we've had to scramble one. To make sure that we get students over to the house safely. And two, what is our plan for replacing it? Uh, because the how or the uh, the plan that we. Currently have is only temporary for the remainder of uh, the next couple of weeks or so. And so, once Andy got back from vacation, we had him scrambling around to try to find us uh, some used options here. And you're right, we did have a um. Transportation committee ironically scheduled for today. And so, once we brought this through there and discussed it, we had settled on. Uh, this uh, bus here, which is a two thousand sixteen Chevy Thomas Minotaur. Bus for twenty-nine passenger bus that has a gas engine with thirty-seven thousand miles. Uh, the price is thirty thousand dollars plus the tax and licensing involved with that purchase. And I do have some photos here. If you're at all interested.
As you're running us through those. Do we have money in our budget set aside for a bus purchase?
Uh, uh, not necessarily for a bus purchase, but we do have money set aside earlier from this year. If you remember, we. Uh, ended up buying a ten-passenger van with COVID dollars and there was uh, twenty-five thousand dollars left. In that budget for the van purchase on a different note. And so, we used COVID dollars instead of the the van dollars at this point. And we continued to have discussions about the need for. Van and we decided to hold off during that committee time. And so those twenty, that twenty-five thousand is still sitting there. Um, the other five thousand dollars or so, uh, Josh can maybe speak a little bit to that. In regards to where um, the other five thousand dollars plus would come from. Um, in regards to the the budgeting part.
Yeah, sure. So uh, each year a budget dollar amount for fuel for the buses. And we're significantly underneath that budget currently. And uh, after discussions with Andy, it there'll be at least one more fill of the tanks. Uh, this fiscal year, if not two. Uh, in either case, we'd have sufficient funds remain in that budget. Uh, to help cover the balance of the cost of this uh, van. Uh, one of the things that Andy noted too with the purchase of this van in particular versus another brand is um, the Thomas brand is what we've got for other fleet. Uh, so in terms of maintaining the bus, uh, if things break down, uh, we should have a lot of parts that will cross. Uh, work for each other. So um. Uh, we would have funds in our current budget as it sits without having to increase anything or take from other areas uh, within transportation to pay for this.
Rebecca, you made your very first meeting. How did that go? It's transportation related.
I know. Well, we, I learned a lot about buses today. Um, but I mean, I think this is a sound purchase and it's within the budget and um. That's something about the engine too, right? Like, cause it's a gas engine. It breaks down and it's easier to repair. I remember that. So, so it seems like um, it'll meet their needs and. I think one of the other things that we were concerned about too was a timeframe too. So that's why we wanted to get it added to um. The agenda today in the event that uh, it gets sold from underneath us. Um, so, yeah. It looks like a nice bus.
Yep. Andy has a way of finding us used things um, and does very well by us. So. Other comments about this? Any? Anna, were you able to make this meeting?
I had a last minute conflict today, so I was not able to make the meeting.
Okay.
So what is the plan for the old bus? Is it available and matching for parts possibly?
Like rusty parts. Isn't how long we want to keep it there, I guess. Uh, the value is very minimal. And Andy put it nicely. To us, uh, we would probably look to either sell it on auction or or somewhere else. Or that's try to maximize the amount of money we can get out of it.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the bus as shown and discussed.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Rebecca?
I'll second. This is Anna.
Anna on the second. Other discussion. A yes vote would be for the approval of this bus purchase. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to approve the recommendations from the Finance and Facility Committee regarding school perception survey. And plan for election. Jeff?
Um, well, kind of the the timeline uh, that we've had here, obviously, we we've gone from strategic plan. Through survey, through survey results, and we've kind of landed here with, after having some facility and finance committee. Discussions along the way. Um, I I don't know if the Finance Committee representative and the Facility Committee representatives. Want to talk a little bit about this. I can bring up the agenda and show you the things that we talked about, but really. It, the, 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 the main points of those two committee meetings, the Finance Committee was talking about the tax levy and a little bit about the facility. Uh, potential there with a potential bond. And then the Facility Committee mainly focused on. Uh, the bond itself and it's probably about an hour and a half or two hour discussion in the, in the Facility Committee meeting with our representatives from ISG. Uh, ISG is here tonight. I saw them come into the meeting. So if there's any questions for them along the way as well, they are available. So I don't know if uh, Bob or Anna or whoever wants to start.
I was not uh, I was not there initially as I'm struggling with Zoom things. But uh, I was in and out and uh. Jeff did a very nice job of overlaying point by point. Where we are as a district, um, the the repercussions, the the need for this. And uh, after about a forty-minute meeting, it was unanimously, unanimously, unanimously approved by the Finance Committee. You were there, weren't you, Anna?
I was. Yep. And I, I was on the facilities call the, the day before. So it was, it was two, two days worth of uh, discussing. Where we're at and where we need to be. The facilities meeting was two and a half hours, Jeff.
Oh, sorry. Did I miss another hour in there?
We, we spent a lot of time, the, the facilities committee spent a, a pretty significant amount of time. Sort of arranging what our priorities were and and what we need to be asking for in question one, in question two, and then in a question three. And the importance of. The, the technology levy being passed in order to make all of the subsequent questions make sense. We also were unanimous in how we ultimately. Laid out what we think the questions should be. Um, if we determine that we're going to go forward with this.
Yeah, and here's um, kind of where the, the, the Facility Committee landed at. With the three questions and I, I don't know, Bob, if you were finished on yours, we can kind of give a, a run-through of this.
Yeah, go ahead.
The Facility Committee. But if you remember from the survey, um, on the facility side of that survey, there was three areas. That was discussed as being pretty well supported. Uh, one of them being the update, the heating and ventilation system. Second one was repairing the building exterior and addressing site drainage issues. And then the third one was to renovate the science and CTE area. Um, a decision was made during the committee to only look at renovating the CTE area and then. Put further discussion and vision into what the science room mayor could look like. And so we're going to hold off on that for now. And continue to chime in here, Anna. I don't want to overstep.
I, I don't. And I think the, the information that was presented to Facilities Committee wise was that the, the, the primary renovation to the. Science rooms was for cabinetry and um, just kind of determined that because we don't know for sure how. We want that area to be used. It, it didn't make sense to invest funds until we have a better idea of. How that space is going to be used.
Yep. Areas that were looked at, tested that um. Uh, Sue had talked about maybe being a better second question because the, the replies back was that we needed more information. Um, obviously, if they get more information, they could be supportive or they could not be supportive. Uh, and so these three areas here, updating interior finishes. Uh, the first part talked about flooring, ceiling, painting and cabinetry. Uh, the committee decided to hold off on that as well as we felt pretty comfortable. Where we are at. Um, the next area in this part is for the sanding and refinishing of the gym floor in the high school. And during that time mainly is to replace the gym bleachers. If you're replacing gym bleachers, you want to do your floor at the same time. The gym bleachers are roughly twenty, twenty-two years old. And they're getting to a point where one, the manufacturer is no longer in business and the replacement parts are scarce for that bleacher system. If that bleacher system all of a sudden gets pulled out for a game one night and it, it doesn't go back in, we may be in trouble. And the cost of there is a pretty significant cost to replace uh, without some needed help. Uh, the outdoor areas, um, resurfacing of the eight-lane track, the tennis courts we left off for now. Uh, install, installing new lighting on the stadium field and track area behind the school. We held off on lighting in these areas. These four areas. And then. The last item in this grouping was to regrade the stadium field and add irrigation inside. Um, along with that, uh, we decided to add a third question that's related to this final item down here. Um, the group talked about the total cost of turf at the stadium field and the merits of it and the, and the negative pieces of it. In the end, the group decided that adding this question was worth. Uh, having the people in the community to decide, uh, there won't be any way close that they would ever get closer to a turf field. Than an additional amount of money here. And so this question was added uh, so that the uh, community could make that decision if they wanted to add that extra bit in. To add artificial turf. To that stadium back there. So in the end, it would be a three-question ballot for the bond. And again, Anna, you can, you can't really tap me over Zoom, but at least if you have something to add.
No, I think um, part, part of the discussion about the adding that third question uh, against. The advice of school perceptions to keep it to two questions is the benefit of upgrading to a turf. Field knowing that um. In the long term, it will probably be a benefit to the district. However, the perception of turf is that it's a luxury. Item. Um, and not wanting to try to go all in for turf and have it. Have it fail. Um, we wanted to, to try and at least upgrade the field so that it's safer to use. I think that's the, the primary concern um, with the field as it stands is that it, it is. Not the safest place to play and the usability where a turf field will allow you to use it for. If I add during the day, you can have practice on in the afternoon and use it for a game in the evening. You can't do that on a sod field.
Right. And I think some of the comments around the number of uses per month, if I, and I, I think Kevin was in here. Or Justin I saw from ISG and please correct me if I'm wrong, but you could use it for twenty events a month as opposed to seven events per month.
Yeah, I think that sounds about right.
Yeah.
To chime in here if you would, please.
Sorry, Bob?
I, I would like Reed to chime in as the uh. Athletic Director here to give us some uh, feedback from your perspective.
So I, I would agree with what Anna was saying when we were going through as to what all is going to be in the two-second question. And in the, the concern was if we put the turf up into question number two and that were to fail. Um, based off the turf, then we lose all those potential uh, updates to that facility. I, I would agree that we need to do something there to that um, stadium field. Uh, it's, I, I don't feel really safe. I've just visually, you know. Observing in a COVID year, let alone a normal year and seeing that our varsity football team is practicing on it. And our lower level football is playing it. I don't feel safe about us practicing on it, let alone playing. Because it's basically dust and weeds, not uh, really enough. Cushion grass, if you will, to have, to allow any absorption to prevent any uh, impact injuries. So we certainly need to do something. The, the crown of it has continues to grow. We don't have any irrigation on that as well. Uh, the lighting, I think, speaks for itself as well. As you know, we did have to move um, early on and the, and this happens. You know, potentially any year, but we did have to move our first home soccer match to uh, the away location. Uh, because of the heat advisory. And if we could have delayed it and played it later at night, like traditional. Traditionally, other conference schools play, we would have been able to play under the lights. But because we didn't have lights. Um, we weren't able to do that. Um, upgrading the stadium would allow us our, our sock and, and getting the lights taken in place or in addition to. Would allow our soccer teams to play at uh, their matches at the stadium. It allow lower football to play their games at the stadium field as well. Um, I might as well say it here. I've told Coach Myers here on several occasions. Um, that football will remain at John Birch for as long as he is willing to continue there and for the city to allow us to play there. We don't want to break away from tradition. So regardless of whether we do a sod field or we do a turf field. Varsity football will remain at John Birch as long as Coach Myers and the city allow and are comfortable with that. Now, I would like to make this as beautiful statement as we can be that they would want to transition here. But certainly don't want to uh, go away from that tradition of, of playing down at John Birch. We're happy to do that. Um, so it's important that that gets communicated out there. I know that that's always going to be a lingering question. It's something that I've been asked. In my short time here as well. But that would be the goal for that. And, and I think it's moving that turf down to question three is. I, I, I feel strongly that it has to be asked because we're never going to be this close to upgrade to that turf. Yeah, if it's a possibility. Uh, agreed, Anna touched on that as well. If, if we have a turf, we could have our practices there on Monday before that lower level football game on Monday. We could have something there Tuesday before the soccer match. Wednesday, we'd allow the, the youth organizations or even after those Mondays and Tuesday nights to be on there. Same thing with Thursday with soccer. If it's, would have to limit that. If it's turf, FIA could be out there any day that they want as well. Um, so. I think it's important to have all of that utilization. It warrants question number three, in my opinion. I think that we would be remiss if we didn't at least ask that question. Um, especially when we're in potentially that close in dollar amount.
Um, Dave Peterson, if he's with us, I would certainly like to know from a maintenance perspective. About a turf field and what issues is, are created there, if any.
Well, you know, obviously with sod, you have everything from the irrigation to the fertilizing, to the aeration. Um, mowing. Um, a lot of that depends on mother nature and how much you do that. So there's, you know, quite a bit of things that go along with. A regular sod field, which, you know, when a sod field's done right, it's fantastic. There's nothing wrong with it. It's just the upkeep and maintenance. Now, a turf field, obviously, the hours of play are significantly more. Um, not to mention the benefit of, of, if it rains. Within ten minutes after a downpour, y- you can be on the field. Um, another. Another huge benefit. As far as maintenance, you know, I, and maybe Kevin can jump in and kind of help me out with this, but. You know, I, I think they're getting a lot more life out of these fields than they were in the past. And, you know, they're getting up to, correct me if I'm wrong, up to. Fifteen years of use before we're even thinking about replacement. Which is, you know, about double what they had originally thought. And obviously traffic has a lot to do with that. But having anything on site for my maintenance staff benefits us in a huge way. Just with location, just having it on site. That's a huge benefit. So, you know, e- everything Anna and Reed touched on is spot on. They did a great job of describing everything that I would, I would say about it.
This is Kevin with ISG. So an artificial turf, natural turf or natural grass. You're out there lining the field constantly. So another savings would be, you don't have to line it very often. But there are some maintenance things that you need to do. There, the infill material that it, that's put into the turf, the artificial turf has to be. How do I word it? Dragged out every once in a while because it has a tendency as people move on it, the athletes and everyone. Tends to bunch up in certain areas. So every once in a while you have to. Grade it basically or drag the field to level it out. And you need to add some every so often because whether it's the rain or what have you, it, it. Just ends up disappearing or gets matted down. I know a friend that had one in Austin, Minnesota. Depends on who all uses it, but they had to run a magnet over the field. Oh, every couple of weeks, Bobby pins with the gals in their hair and. Things like that. You'd be surprised how many little metal things were picked up every so often. That was. Concern he had that he hadn't planned for, but it didn't take long. You just run that over it. But otherwise, like Dave said, they are starting to get more life out of these. It used to be, you know, that seven to 10, you'd have to replace the turf, but. And of course, depending on the amount of use it gets, but they're starting. I know we have a couple out there that are fifteen years old now. Yeah.
Do we need more equipment than what we currently have to, to maintain that?
Specialized drag is. No, this is Justin with ISG. I was going to answer that. What we do when we put the. The, the turf out for bid is the turf manufacturers will provide. A specialized dragging system that you can hook up to the back of a, a gator or something that you already have. And it's, it's, I think it's usually two, three thousand bucks or something, but it comes with the turf package and. That way it's the piece of equipment that the turf manufacturer wants you to use and they'll do training with your staff too on how that works.
Dave is, Dave Peterson is the day-to-day guy here. Do you have any experience with turf?
Nope. I haven't had a turf field. I've always done a grass field, to be honest with you. I've visited several sites. I've talked to other people in my positions. You know, that have gone from grass to turf. And, but personally I haven't experienced it. No.
Other questions for these gentlemen?
Bill, I had a question on the value, the dollar amounts there. I mean, the. We're using the same dollar amounts between the, the grass and the turf. Is that reasonable to think that there would be the same?
In our estimating costs, yes, it'd be reasonable that they'd be the same. Part of the upgrade or doing the stadium field in with irrigation and sod. We would prep the, the subcut, the ground beneath it a certain way. As was mentioned earlier, this would be the cheapest time to do it. If you decide to do the sod field and want to come back in three, four, five years and do an artificial turf on top. We would have to tear out all that fill we did, go down deeper and bring in an engineered fill because it's totally different for an artificial turf versus a natural turf. Both costs, yeah. Their estimates at this point, but with other projects we've done and we don't know on the sod field what the dirt or the, the subgrade is, so. Depending how deep we go, would adjust that cost, but yeah. The numbers, yeah, they, they are the same, but that's a good ratio about where they are at. Yep.
And I had a question for Reed on, just as far as the practice, you're practicing on artificial. All week and then on Friday you go down to grass turf. Any, any concerns there?
Bill, we wouldn't practice all week on. Artificial turf, only because we sit in, we're looking at, you know, Monday, Tuesdays and Thursdays would be heavy days. We could get some practice in there. But we'd still utilize those four fields out behind the elementary. As our practice areas, we might have to play a, a junior high soccer game on the current. Varsity field that has that scoreboard. Depending on what that lower level football schedule looks like, we'd maybe have to play, say, an eighth grade game and then a JV if it was that case or if. Or I should say B because we play B football. If our B was the opposite and we could play back to back seventh and eighth, we could do that. Or if we needed to play at the same time, we could play on that second soccer field. Both of those. Two fields closest to the west, you had to think of my direction there. Would both have access to that scoreboard of that current soccer scoreboard. But we would still utilize all four of those fields for practices as well. But we would want to get some practice time on that turf just, just for. You know, comfort levels and predictability as to how that, that ball is going to react.
Sure. Okay.
So we would still use, we would still use those four fields for sure. Yep.
Other questions? Is it possible we can move back to item number one once more, as long as we've been talking sports here? A technology levy. Can we elaborate one more time about where that's taking us and for what reason we would have that out?
I gotta find it first.
Josh, while he's looking, this is a. This is essentially something that frees up money out of our general. In, because we've got this set amount earmarked for technology. Is that, would that be right?
Yeah, correct. So when we first went to toward a one-to-one initiative with technology. We were seeing a pretty healthy fund balance and the decision at that time was to. Fund the technology costs through, you know, general fund balance. We're not in that same situation now and. There is an ability to levy for technology. There's about $400,000 roughly in. Costs that we have in technology that is directly from now the general fund unassigned balance. So. What a tech levy does for us, not only does it ensure the continuation of one-to-one technology initiative and the staffing. And devices that goes along with it, but it would help free up $400,000 in general fund dollars. Which would really help free the unassigned fund balance in our district, which is under board control and use of the discretion of the board. So it really is important. A levy to consider for our districts and the financial need and, and well-being of our district.
Bob, is this the, the document that you're asking for that shows kind of how that, that's broken out there that we showed at the finance committee meeting?
Jeff, I mentioned to you about my capabilities with Zoom. And right now I'm just looking at a board agenda. Somehow I got taken out with my Adobe, so. So whatever the circumstance, you know, I, I was more looking to understand. Let's just say we have this tech levy and it passes and we're able to put 400K from. That's been earmarked for tech into general fund. Where are we going to go in, in the next couple of years with additional tech needs? Will that now come out of the general fund again?
Well, and Josh chimed in here, but the, the best way I can explain this is currently we have $183,000 coming out of our capital. Dollars in our district. There was an earlier spreadsheet that I showed you somewhere along the line that we're pretty well over. Budget and capital from year to year and those dollars are coming out of our general fund. So the $183,000 would help alleviate some of that overage and capital. And the rest of these dollars, because they're not associated with capital expenditures currently. This would all help alleviate stresses on the general fund as well. And so the, the total of all these items that are tech-related are able to be put under this technology levy. And therefore the $400,000 or just over $400,000 as we have it itemized here. Would, would be appropriate for that tax levy. And so. Basically year over year, there would be some pressure taken off of the money that we have coming out of our undesignated fund. Is that the best way to put that, Josh?
Yeah, absolutely. A good point on the leases and affecting the, the operating capital. Each year as we have a negative balance in our operating capital because we overspent there, just the need. There's a. Transfer that's made from.
Made from.
General fund.
General fund.
Designated to cover those funds.
Cover those funds.
So. So we're looking kind of at is, I think your question was future technology needs. And the kind of the important part to, to know there is, in this 400,000, we are fully a one-to-one district. The rotation would be about every four years for one-to-one devices and student hands. But there's also rotation in there for staff devices. So that's all kind of fit into that $183,000. And then there's some other areas within that budget for other items, whether it be, you know, to replace a smart board or projector, those things as they pop up. So. You know, as it sits now and kind of projected looking towards the future, we would still meet our technology needs as they come up with that $400,000.
You know, the, going back on that question, if, if iPads for whatever reason. Go out of style or, or go out of need throughout the district, then those dollars would be simply applied. To the new technology coming up as we rotate through. That's kind of what you're looking at, Bob.
Okay. Other questions or comments on number 11 here about the recommendations?
I, I did want to show you. What each of those three questions for the bond anyway. Totaled, looking back to the facility piece for a little bit. Question one totals 10.4 million roughly. Question two is right around that 1.7 million and then question three is the 665. And question one obviously would be this amount. Question one and two together would be this amount and then question one, two and three total would be 12.8. So if the board decided to go for all three bond questions, it would be a 12.8 million dollar ask. And then obviously with the technology levy. That would be a $400,000 per year ask. There's the tax impact. In one of these documents here, I believe this is it. It shows the tax impact for the average $200,000 house in both. The technology levy up top here for residential, so $200,000 house, which is the average size in, in Cannon Falls. Would be $57 a year. And then for the bond. We had 14 million listed here, so it would be just under, it'd probably be in that $65 range. 60, 65. So you look at the two, it's about 110, $120 increase that we're asking for. On your average house.
Anything else for the cause here? So Jeff, is it possible to go back to the HVAC and. I guess I had a question on what we did with the, the COVID dollars in relation to what this could be?
Yeah, in the HVAC system, there's, there were some questions. I saw that came up in one of the comments saying that we have already finished off the HVAC in the high school and that isn't completely true. If you remember, if you were on the board then, that about half of the 1962 portion and Dave, please chime in here if I. Get out of my area or I'll kick my coverage here. About half of the 1962 addition was done along with the boiler systems. In a, in a pretty big board-approved project about. Five, six, seven years ago with UNESCO. And then. What we did recently with the COVID dollars is that we added a retrofit piece on there to all of our equipment. To sterilize the air, if you will. So this is completely different. This is actually finishing off the HVAC. In the high school and the middle school wings for dehumidification and constant. Air environment, if you will.
You did pretty good, Jeff.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, in, in the, in the big project, we really never touched any of the standalone. Univent heaters that we have approximately 15 of them in the 1962 portion of the building. And we did upgrades to them with the original project about five years ago. So we did a lot of upgrades to them, but we actually kept the original units as they were, you know, pushing around half-life. And still functioning and we focused our dollars elsewhere. For example, the chillers, the dehumidification and the boiler systems. But we're at the point now where, you know, we're another five years in. And these systems are starting to fail and these are the individual, individual systems in the classrooms. Primarily in the high school and the middle school wings. Give you a little better description of the location and what they are.
So Dave, what sort of. I guess improvements do you expect or savings maybe? Controlled temperatures, that sort of thing from this upgrade?
Well, what we have is, you know, one of the main focuses we want is. Climate control and what we have right now in these classrooms is, is really a standalone unit that just blows the air. Out of a exposed pipe straight across the top of the room that eventually gets to a sensor on the other side of the wall. You really don't have any even temperature heating. You have a difficult time controlling them. And each one of these units has their own individual DX cooling that does that room individually. Very hard to control the rooms, very hard to have even temperatures. Not to mention they're very loud. They're right in the classroom, inside the classroom. So what we hope to gain is even temperatures, more efficiencies. A little bit of, of square footage in the room by removing a lot of those things. And ultimately just better. Better, more comfortable classroom space for everyone using it. And. Maybe Kevin, maybe you can chime in.
Oh, this is Justin from ISG. Dave, I was just going to add to that. I think one of the biggest, biggest thing. Things on replacements like this of the old. Unit ventilators, a lot of those old unit ventilators were. Designed to maybe provide. One air exchange per hour for a room. That, that's if they're functioning correctly. And a lot of times, you know, they're not functioning correctly. New systems that were required to design for, that meet MDE standards. You're looking at like six air changes a minute. So there's some drastic. Air quality improvements that would take place as a part of that as well. And obviously you guys know that's becoming even ever more important today.
I guess as a follow-up. A project like this, is it easily done within a summer, summer break?
Yeah, that would be the goal. Go ahead.
I was going to say, it, it's, it's a goal, but I mean, to, to say easy, probably not easy. It. It does require a lot of coordination and a lot of efforts by the construction. Team and designers to make that happen. It is a, it is, you know, it's a serious task. You're going in and you're. Upgrading, you know, 66,000 square foot of HVAC work, but yeah, it, we, we do it. So.
Yeah. Good. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I have a question about how this will appear in the ballot. If they have this, could you scroll down to where the three options are? Of the questions. So if they're voting for question two, that includes the resurfacing. And then question three is for the turf. So I guess I don't understand why.
What, the, the questions would be laid out. If question number one passes, then question number two is in play, but if question number one doesn't pass. Then question. then question two is out of play. So you can't, you, you won't be able to pass question three without passing questions one and two. You won't be able to pass question two without passing question one. Does that make?
Wasn't question three, didn't question three, like, wasn't the cost of putting the turf in the same as the cost of putting the sod in?
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong here, anybody from ISG or or Dave, but the, 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 the cost of doing a turf field from scratch is about one point three million.
Okay.
Correct.
Additional.
This is, it's in addition to, correct. I was gonna correct that earlier when I heard that question, but yeah, that would be in addition to, and I think a point that Kevin made is if you decided to do that later, you're not going to be at that six sixty-five, you're going to be starting all over again, going to one point three, maybe up even up to one point five million. So, yeah, just to clarify, that is in addition to.
Yep. So if you, if people pass the, the question number two and don't pass question number three, and then five years down the line, they want to do turf, you're gonna be back in it for one point three or one point five million.
Okay.
So this is why it's, it's kind of cheap to do it now, if you will.
It's more cost-effective.
Yeah.
Yeah. So just to go back to Brenda's original question in regards to how this would appear on the ballot, so what I'm hearing you say, just to clarify, so in order for, to vote on question two, you have to vote yes to question one. In order to vote on question three, you have to answer yes to question two.
Well, yes and no. People are gonna be allowed to vote on all three questions.
Okay, but in order for it to.
Yes, so everybody, a majority has to vote yes on question one, because we, we're not gonna pass question two without passing question one, and we're gonna that during the education process, saying that our, our most important priority is question one. And then we're gonna educate you more on question two and, and three, obviously. But we're not gonna do all of our athletic facilities and then not do anything for the inside learning piece. That doesn't make any sense.
And then just to, so, and I apologize, so the, the recommendation was for two questions, right? And just their logic was ease of communicating that to, to the voter?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, and we've talked to our financial advisor, Jeff Seeley from Ellers as well. I don't know if any of you have met Jeff yet officially. Josh talked to him, and Josh, you want to give him a summary of what he had said about that?
Yeah, I talked to him and Shelby McQuay, and it was a really good conversation. Financially, in terms of the impact for tax impact, adding question three, very minimal impact, and they would probably recommend not doing that. But looking back at what does that item in question three could mean to question two and the potential of failing what's in that question two, they thought, it does make some pretty logical sense to keep that as a standalone, especially considering that there, there's that need to have a safer playing field in the back. And you hate to lose that if the turf were to be a deal breaker to, to some. They've seen not many school districts go out for that many questions, but they have seen it done, and it's not very high anecdotal on pass or fail on that, just because there's not a lot of them that are out. But they said, given the situation, that this actually makes sense to do.
Others? Jeff, would you reacquaint us with the timelines, and you probably have it up, but again, I can't see it. What, what do we look for timelines?
If the board decides to move forward, I guess I would, there's, this would be a, a vote to tell me to keep moving forward, and we would bring resolutions and other items in regards to a timeline that's set forth pretty standard-wise here for elections. And in my mind, I think we want to shoot for the May eleventh voting window. There are five voting windows for bonds, and our bond issue and the tech levy is considered a bond as well. We would run a special election on May eleventh, and so if the board is comfortable with that, it would allow us, if we did fail it, we could run it again on the November second general election as a, as a coming back to the voters again. Obviously, if it passes, that's great. If we would run it in August, there isn't a whole lot of turnaround time to get to the November election to, to rethink and represent to the community. And so I, I think a, a good measured shot at this would be for the May eleventh special election window, and for us to meet that, we would have to have a review and comment done and into the commissioner by February tenth. We would have ISG assist us with that. And then for the February eighth meeting, even though this isn't due until February twenty-sixth, we would have the official adoption for the resolutions calling for the election, and then furnishing the ballot to each county auditor by February twenty-sixth. So we, we would pass all these resolutions at the February eighth meeting to help prepare us, get this in by February twenty-sixth. We would get the review and comment back from the state on April twentieth, which is, is interesting in dealing with these in my past history. That's usually a, a press from the state to get it back within the timeframe that they're supposed to. They give us all these timelines, and then they have, they struggle to meet their own timelines back at us. We would need to do a special mailing by April sixteenth, and then the combined precincts by April twenty-seventh. We would have to publish the review and comment after we get it back. We'd have to publish the election notice on May fourth. Post the election notice to the administrative offices of the district at least ten days prior to on May first. Post a sample ballot on May seventh, and then host the election on May eleventh down at City Hall. So I think the biggest thing tonight is, if you decide to move forward, you would need to give us your blessing to keep moving forward and I'll work with ISG on getting the review and comment going, and then the other piece is, you should probably think about engaging either with ISG or another company about pre-referendum services that would help us organize and present information to the community. Most of those services are, are done free of charge or, or pro bono, I guess. In some companies' cases, if we end up using them in the construction of the items that we have listed or in the architectural part of it as well. And I can work with companies on negotiating that piece as well, and bring that to the board for information as well. If you are interested in me exploring that as we move forward. But companies in general are, are very helpful in, in getting the experts up front to talk about some of these items like HVAC, field turf, renovation of CTE areas and some of the ideas that they have, and so I, I would recommend that we, that we go along with that route as well.
If we can just go back, consideration to approve the recommendations of the Finance and Facility Committee, and I'm gonna pick your brain one more time. This came with the endorsement, one, two, and three came with the endorsement of the Facility Committee, correct?
Correct.
And your attendance at the Finance Committee, that was meant with the unanimous approval at the Finance Committee as well, correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so having said those two things, we do have approval from both committees after research to continue to engage forward, get our review and comment, and, and move in a timely manner, especially if we, if we look at mid, early to mid-May as our deadlines. So do we have a motion to move forward at this time? And task Jeff with coordinating things as review and comment in other areas?
We're all waiting.
I'll make a motion for Jeff to move forward.
I'll second.
Rebecca? She's the most then. And Brenda is the second. Any other discussion? It's been a good conversation here, folks. Yeah, I, I, it's Bill. My concern, I guess, here is the timing. You know, May's not that far around the corner, and in our current scenario, how do we see ourselves really communicating what we're looking to do to the community? And I guess it's not like we can really have meetings and fireside chats and whatever else we've done in the past. So do we have a picture of how we can do this between now and May?
Just a short snapshot of the engagement that I have with, with the chamber and the EDA and the local groups that I still interact with, granted it's via Zoom, obviously, it's not that face-to-face interaction. I would imagine we would have to have some community meetings via Zoom. We would have to push out informational material, and maybe ISG has other ideas that they have used during the pandemic, obviously. I've never tried to attempt to go out and pass a bond during a pandemic before, so I, I, I'm just kind of shooting from the hip here a little bit on some of that stuff, Bill. But.
Jeff. Jeff, I can add there, if you, if you, if you'd let me, Justin from ISG, we are currently working on Springfield School District. Obviously, it's a little bit unprecedented right now, so we don't have a lot of stats on it. But what they're doing is their community meetings, which are actually in progress the, the last couple of weeks here, they're, they're doing like an in-person in their auditorium, but they're limiting it to a certain number of guests. You'd have to like go onto the website and sign up. And then they are also at the same time doing that meeting live on Zoom, and people can log in and take a look at that. So that's what they're doing with their community meetings. We did work with them, and we provided them with a video. We actually have a video autographer that he came down, and we had numerous individuals from the school speak and try to get that community information on video, and then they posted that to their website, and I know they compiled completely on their own, they compiled like a forty, fifty-page document. It's a lot of information, probably nor, more than you normally would see. So that's what they're doing, but we don't know that it, it works yet either. They, their vote is February ninth, I believe.
Obviously, we have the space in our auditorium to do something similar to that. We have the technology pieces available as well. I, I think that sounds about as good as any right now, as at least one approach, and we can certainly be creative. I, I like the idea of getting video information out. I know in the past, I've had a, an email account set up specifically to, to have people ask their questions, and then we respond to them. In full disclosure, I worked at my last district in Southland with ISG, and they did a wonderful job with marketing. We use their pre-referendum services as well. So they, they have a marketing team at ISG that, that can help figure some of that stuff out as well, to help us engage with the community.
Okay, we have a motion in the second on the floor to charge Jeff with moving forward on the, I guess, the election timelines is what we could call it, right?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question before we?
Yep, yep.
Um, having been through a special election before, the cost of that falls entirely to the district, correct? Do we have an estimate of how much that's going to cost?
Each special election that I've ran in, in past districts comes up to about ten thousand dollars.
Okay, and is the benefit of doing a special election, the difference in turnout, is that the benefit to doing a special as opposed to waiting until the general?
I think part of it is trying to get a move on the information that we have, one, for the survey results. Two, I, I think it's good to give us time, if you're looking to capture revenue from the technology levy, if you wait until the, the general election and you fail it, then you're almost into the next fiscal year to where you may have issues and you may have to deal with cuts until you get that revenue cycle back for the taxes as well.
And I think if, if I'm remembering correctly, even if with the special election, that the levy funds from, if the technology levy passes, we would not see those until the twenty twenty-three fiscal year?
Uh, Josh, do you have confirmation on that? Josh?
Just fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, so there isn't any difference in the fiscal year. The only difference would be is if you did fail it, would you have time to run it again to hit that target you were looking at initially, if that makes sense, Anna?
Do we have any?
Go ahead.
So, if we have the special election and it doesn't pass, like, what's the, what, I mean, is there an anecdotal or an actual number of, like, levies that then pass at the general election? I mean, because we are, I mean, May to November, what, that's what, six-month-ish?
And, and you know, one thing back to Anna's point, and I'll get to your question here in a second, Rebecca, but one thing back to Anna's point is it, it is an odd number year election in November of this year, and so if there's nothing else happening at the county level, we would have to pay for an election anyway. And so if, if it's an even number year, we'd have to wait another full calendar year to hit that number again, and then the, the state would be running their general election. So really, it's gonna be a, a special election, no matter how we look at it, either May or November. And then as far as the percentages of passing, is that kind of your question, Rebecca?
Yeah, I mean, especially if it's following a previous, that'll fail.
I, I think it really depends on the year. We passed a, a bond in, in Southland on the year that Trump was elected during the presidential year in two thousand sixteen. I think there was some pretty decent success this past November, considering the situation with the pandemic and it being a presidential year. Presidential years are usually pretty tough, because there's the, the larger voter turnout. General elections, you have a little bit less turnout in the off-presidential years. And obviously, special elections are, you know, you, you need to get people out to vote for that, obviously. Schools have had pretty good success over the past five years, I would say, in referendums in general, depending on what they're going out for. I think the state is seeing more of the surge in support for schools that way, because I think they understand that the economic climate in the state isn't good for schools, because the, the funding for schools isn't keeping up with such things as inflation and with all the needs that schools have. And so I think people are, that message is starting to get out to people, and, and the support is coming around for them. Does that help answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, discussion is closed. We have a motion in the second on the floor to charge Mr. Sampson with continuing on with the election timelines and meeting with the appropriate entities to coordinate toward our, toward an election. A yes vote would be to confirm that. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a six-zero vote. Folks, that was excellent conversation. We needed to have that. We needed to come out with, with some type of resolution toward this. And, uh, you did a really good job. Good questions, good answers. Thanks to the others that assisted us with, uh, general information. Um, our upcoming next regular board meeting is February eighth at six P M. At that time, uh, spring coaches will be approved. Uh, mid-year superintendent evaluation, that could be in closed session or open session, depending on how the, um, superintendent would like it. We go closed most of the time. Uh, and a resolution about the American Indian Educational Parent Advisory Committee, one twenty-four D dash seventy-eight. And other things that, uh, are pending with school issues right now. Anything else that you need or you think we should put on the agenda? Uh, we can get that done. Having said that, I would look for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Bob, I have an announcement. Um, just so, so that people know that the Ed Foundation is holding an online auction on their Facebook page for leftover items from the, uh, from their fundraising auction that they had to cancel last year. So check out the Facebook page. There's some great items there. You can, you can bid on. You don't have to bid. You can just say you want it, and it's yours.
Thank you for that reminder. Okay, so we have, uh, nearly an adjournment to go. Excuse me for looking.
Um, I'll move to adjourn.
Yeah, that helps. Thank you.
I'll second.
Uh, who yelled second?
Anna.
Thank you. We have a motion in the second on the floor. A yes vote would be for adjournment. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. We are officially adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.
Good night.
Good night.